Order, all board members are present, so we've established a form. I move to adjutant Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we go with open forum, public input, and there's no one here, so we'll move to approve agenda and changes to agenda.
No changes, what was published is what you have in front of you.
All right, need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Move by Sean Powell and same by Weber to approve the agenda, any other discussions? Hear none, non-fair, say aye.
Aye.
Call the same sign, motion carried.
All right, next is conflicts of interest, which we have none, so we will move, and nothing's been added, that you know of, or?
No.
Okay, all right, number seven is approved, consent agenda, A is approved financial reports, B is approved main minutes, C approved claims, D declare items surplus, there are lists of music, technology, and classroom items that will be declared disposable surplus. E is approved nursing contract with Avera St. Benedict's, this is a contract for nursing services for the 22-23 school year. F is approved Head Start Classroom Participation Agreement. This agreement is between South Central Head Start Incorporated and the Parkson School District to provide services for children who qualify for support services due to economic disadvantages. G is approved DSS Contract for Auxiliary Placement Services for 22-23. This agreement is between South Dakota DSS and the Parkson School District for educational costs for children who are in CPS DOC custody that attend our home Parkson. H is approved MOU for our home. This is an agreement that outlines education services the Parkson School District provides to educate our home incorporated students. Need a motion to approve.
Question or clarification first on nursing, we're still using SRR funds on that, correct?
Yes, sir, for this year as well as next year, as some of next year, I don't know how much of the next year after that. We'll get a greater portion of it. And that was in the contract, we reduced.
Right, right, right.
We're trying to capture as much as we can, we looked at that as far as the footprint that they have, and we felt comfortable that we could get that done with that timeframe.
And the fees changed?
They did, after two years of holding it steady, days are steady, it's just that their nominal fee to provide that per hour obviously went up, we hadn't done it in two years, so, but we just, it's five days a week, but just reduce the hours that they're here.
Just by one hour a day, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, need a motion to approve?
I had one other question.
Go ahead.
Yep. On our home, maybe Craig can help out too, but how close does that follow with what we get from the state? As far as our per pupil?
The totality of dollars that is coming from the DSS for our home? Not even.
Not even close?
Because if you think about a per diem or a per pupil ADM that factors into the formula, the thing about the formula, you know, or reimbursed or how we are paid for students is because of the ones that attend here, the percentages that they attend here, they're all not 100% in order to claim the full benefit, some of them they come for class, some for a couple of classes, so, but the stipend in that contract versus what we are, what we would recoup from the states, our state funding, I don't think it's, well, then it's far apart, but it's not the same for that. And it's a different entity, it's from, from the DSS aspect of things, so it's a, I.
It's a different bucket of money. Is that what the kids that we receive are coded?
Yes.
Because if they come from DSS or Department of Corrections, then that's these kids, that's 75,000. That's for letter G.
G.
Okay, and, you know, this year it was 6,600 dollars a month.
Versus parent placement too, because that's another factor.
Because then we bill directly to them, to the school districts. If they're parent placed, we bill the school district because they can't get to count them on their ADM, and so we're billed them for the exact amount that they would receive, that we would have received, so those are awash.
So where they would have went to school?
Right.
If they had not been parent placed, they get billed for that student?
Yes.
And we get different reimbursements based off of how much they come, like if they're here 50%, you get a?
Well, we get to count, if they're in public school for 50%, then we count them on our home for 50%, but that's only if it's during, before September 25th. If it happens after September 25th, we get nothing.
Because that's with any kid in the state, your last day in September, your last Friday in September is your count day. So if a child shows up October 2nd, you're educating that kid for free the rest of the school year, regardless, our home, public school, no matter what, they don't factor into our ADM, so.
But this 75,000 contract deal is based, it's kind of a year in the rear too, it's based on kind of the kids we had.
No, you kind of refreshed my memory, because I knew there's certain situations on each student, so that kind of.
And they have to do it that way, because there's no way, there's so much in and out there, there's no way to account for the kids within a given school year, so you're going to get it from years gone, a year gone by. That's as much as I know about it, I'm not 100%.
No, no, I just knew there was some stipulations on it, and I just, just needed to refresh.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Sorry, I should have asked that first. Okay, need a motion to approve?
So move, second. Move by Paul, same violation, any other discussion? Hear none, non-fair, say aye.
Aye.
Call the same sign, motion carried.
All right, we'll move to number eight, information discussion, staff reports versus high school principal.
Well, they go there typically, but I don't, if you don't have anything, you can come say hi, Mr. Kinnip, at the very least, and maybe a little of the work that you've done before Mr. Norton's departure.
Yeah, you bet. So yeah, I just, a half hour before the meeting, I just moved all my boxes into the office and dusted off some stuff, so I'll start kind of getting settled, and before Mr. Norton left, I think I've been down here about four or five times in the last few weeks trying to, oh, like learn the infinite campus part, especially the our home, I took a tour of our home facility and try and understand that aspect of the job. We looked at the schedule together last Friday before he left, so trying to dig in and understand, but hopefully that'll be finalized a little earlier than normal too, and can get that out and have the staff help me make sure that everything looks good, because right now I'm just, I'm trying to get my bearings and figure out where everything is, so hopefully that'll happen as little by little throughout the summer, and yeah, so it's been good, I'm excited. Any questions?
We have a lot, I bring up a list, just kidding, I'm teasing.
Bring them at me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is elementary principal AD report.
All right, good evening, guys. Let's see, starting off, we'll start with this elementary stuff. Right now, we are, we kicked off our summer reading program last week. We had really a lot of success, I think, with the people that are involved in that, we have 53 kids signed up for our summer reading program, we actually had a, we had a plan in having two staff members kind of work that, we had to bring in a third. So we have Mrs. Conrad, Mrs. Bruning, and Mrs. Reichardt are all working with that. And that is for students that were in kindergarten through fourth grade. So we have a huge, a big number of kindergarten and first grade, and then a few second, third, fourth graders mixed in with that. So it was fun to get that kicked off last week and see all those kids in the building and the excitement for that program getting going. I think that's going to be a pretty good deal to just kind of keep the reading happening throughout the summer so we don't suffer any learning loss, and then really help build on where students were at and kind of keep growing in that area. We'll get our extended school year stuff started next week, so those things are happening. The building is being kind of shuffled around, we're going to have teachers moving and lots of new things happening there with the way that, where teachers are going to be and how that's going to look, so that's all underway right now in the elementary world. Other than that, that's kind of it for elementary. AD wise, a couple of things, our summer strength program is underway. We brought in, with the coaches, the coaches discussion, we brought in Avera to kind of help organize those workouts, so they are programming the workouts for us, and then twice a week, we have an actual certified trainer coming in and running the workouts, and then our coaches are using the workouts designed by Avera on the other two days of our four-day-a-week plan. So that's underway and going, and I think that's been going pretty well from what I've heard so far, feedback. Otherwise, the camps and stuff are happening, there's been boys' basketball going on, girls' basketball, wrestling, football's been working hard, so everybody, volleyball's in here, everybody's going and working already this summer, it's already been really busy, and you can find kids in here pretty much from 6:30 till late in the afternoon, so that's going good. Let's see, what else was I going to talk about with the AD stuff? That was kind of a big one with the summer stuff.
State golf just finished, right?
Yeah, girls' state golf just finished, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, the girls did well up there, so that was in Sioux Falls, so we were out there, state track finished up, and we set some school records there, and the kids there, you know, did a great job representing our school and the district, and just did an excellent job with that, and their hard work paid off for them to have a good experience at state, so that was really good to see. One other new thing that we're going to be kind of switching up, we've had in the past the athlete banners in the armory on the wall, and this year we're going to have all seniors have an option to have a banner up there. So that's been opened up and sent out to the senior families, to just anybody that, we want them to represent and celebrate all the talents that they bring, whether that's a club, a fine art, an athletic, or just whatever their love of Parkson High School would be. So that'll be something that's a little bit different, Mr. Kinnip is working with the seniors and their families getting pictures, and then the National Guard has graciously agreed to sponsor all those banners, so those are kind of some of the new summer stuff that's happening, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
About the reading program.
Yeah.
What, how long is it?
It's going to be four weeks.
Is it like doing, how often?
Twice a week, so it's Tuesdays and Thursdays for an hour. We have two different sessions, so we have a morning, like a nine to 10 with our kind of younger group, and then a 10 to 11, and that's with the older group, and there are two sessions of those.
Is that something that a parent could just sign up for, or was that like?
Yep, sent home to all the.
Younger?
Yep.
I didn't get one, because mine kids are not that young, but I was just curious how that worked, I didn't.
Yep, so we sent that out to all the families, and then put that on the website when we were looking for people to sign up, and we actually had a couple families find out about it late and got signed up last week, and so they, you know, they found out it was happening Tuesday, came, stopped in, and by Thursday they were here, we added, I think, four new families that weren't signed up, so word of mouth too spreads and travels, and so.
My kids are doing it, and it's been great, just for something to do during the day, you know, they're home with a babysitter, and they're super pumped about football cards, and.
So do they have like an assignment then for reading?
Kind of, they just have to mark down how much they're reading.
Outside of the program?
As well for parents, so that I'm not the one hounding them.
Yeah, so then they have something to keep them accountable, that's.
Yep, so they're tracking, they're going to do a total minute track of everyone altogether at the end, but then each kid has a calendar that they'll, they keep track of their own minutes. The teachers are also, each one's a little different, but each teacher tested them at the beginning, so they're checking like fluency, I forget what are the, one of the other tests, they had a couple little assessments that they're doing so they can track growth over the four weeks time that we have them and stuff, so.
That's awesome, cool.
Using the reading levels, we test at the end of the spring, so we'll use those reading levels to kind of get them started, and then building from there.
And that was free?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Yep, some SRR money is running that for our.
Sure, yeah, that's awesome. I mean, we probably talked about it, I just maybe missed all the details, I don't know, I just was interested.
Maybe you're not the one to ask, but how's the open gym?
So far, so good, we've had three now? Okay, I knew of two.
Two or four.
Okay.
Numbers in that range.
Okay, so we've had a couple start to come in and find out about it, a couple people asking me out in the community and stuff, so we're just kind of traveling a little bit. Our process for that is, we have the waivers in here that, you know, we all agreed on, so they're in here, family comes in, reads through the waiver, takes that home, signs it, brings it back, and then we pass that email address on to Tony. Tony creates a FOB, and they can come pick that up the next day, and then they would have access, so I think it's been going well so far.
So any hiccups, if you know?
Not yet.
I know it's not very many that are signed up.
Yeah, so far, no.
So you think people know about it?
I think people are starting to learn about it, I don't know that everybody knows about it yet.
I have some questions about it from people too.
I would think there'd be more than three or four people that people know about it.
It's probably because it's summer and they're already in here quite a bit, is my guess, with open gyms and stuff, but I bet once school starts and like the official athletic season start and they're out of season, maybe then they'll use it a little bit more, is my guess, I don't know.
The telltale tape on that will be whether it's either out of season or in-season type of deal where it's on a weekend, it's a Saturday, it's a Sunday, it's after hours, that's where you're going to see the people engaging in that, because right now, the kids are here, they're in strength and conditioning workouts, they're here for basketball, they're here for volleyball, they're here doing something anyway, so, and then in the evenings in the summertime, you just, what, four baseball games going on over here, and softball, I mean, so the availability is there, I'll be honest with you, we haven't really taken the initiative to go crazy, and we're not, we didn't hang the shingle out per se, it's been kind of word of mouth, just to kind of get a feel for it, I guess, to be honest with you, and see how that went before we opened the doors and felt maybe we would get inundated a little bit, so, but.
I think we're ready now. The kids have been told.
Okay.
At least from the boys' standpoint, they have been.
And the girls' coaches have committed.
We, I'm pretty sure Mr. Norton made that one of the points of reference before he even let school out, that this is an opportunity that was going to be coming. Whether they listen to it or not, I can tell you, I won't share.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. All right, Mr. Kinnip.
I put in my notes there just a few things, the first one is our HVAC project. Boiler's gone, the two new ones are here, but they have not started installing them, so that's went really pretty quick, quite honestly. They haven't been back yet, but they also talked to, I talked to Ryan Shesley, who is head of Mitchell Plumbing and Heating, and getting the controls from Climate Systems, and maybe doing some work on installation of those control systems as well. So he assured me that, just so you know, I went the extra mile and said, listen, if we're going to drain this system down, we're going to tear out the old and put in the new. I said, and then the controls show up, I said, next, a year from now, we'll have to drain the whole system again in order to put the controls in. They said, I want to ensure that I'm not going to get billed again for that. I sent it to our engineer, I sent it to the head contractor, and I sent it to the subcontractor, Mitchell Plumbing. And he assured me that that would not happen, because he'll capture it all, he didn't want to put dirty back in, which I agree with in the new system, 100%. He said, but I'll promise I'll capture it all, come back a year from now, and put it back, and he said, I'm not, there's no added fee to that, because if you don't vet those things, you just leave it to chance, then all of a sudden it's going to be, hmm, by the way, you know what, we did this, you agreed to it, yeah, but nobody said you were going to charge me another, and glycol is astronomical right now, I mean, to drain all that and not capture it all would be just a sticker shock on the part of it, so. And the lighting project, I talked with Damon on that, electrical engineer, and he was going to pin bill down. Bill had reached out and said he has all the equipment, or excuse me, all the fixtures, and then possibly starting next week. So, hey, we're going to, I think, start flipping that and getting that done, which is a month earlier than what he originally told us, so that's a good thing. Fail insurance, any questions on that, where we're at from the first hail back in April, I think we're pretty good on that. That's Craig, you got anything to add to that, or anything on your throw pits, or?
No, I haven't, I got the quote from Kiff yet to give to them.
Okay.
Which they wanted to be.
So are we repairing anything, guys, or are we just keeping the money?
Not doing anything yet.
To the vehicles?
Yeah.
Wasn't planning on the vehicles, so.
No, I'm just asking.
I think we talked about that a couple, a couple months ago, your guys' decision was to, because of some of the age of the vehicles, wind-up surplus and all, but we'll take it as is and then potentially invest in another, another vehicle with the dollars we've recovered on that situation.
And the second storm, the wind damage was the pits, the, just the, no, pole vault pit, they got carried a mile down the road, and then a little bit of the side.
Fashions.
Fashions on the stadium, got just lifted up. So those were the only two things that they took a look at, and just haven't got anything back for it yet.
Putting your notes also, some information on school safety plan in the light of what had happened here at the end of school, and you saw the situation in Texas, and then it seems to be a rash, whether it was education-related or it was just in the common public. So I had a few people reach out to me about that process here, to be honest with you, this is my first year. We didn't take any, I didn't take any initiative, we didn't practice any of those drills, evacuation, lockdown. We had our normal severe weather awareness stuff that we did, but we didn't do any of that. So, you know, we'll go through that process and take a look at what's on paper as respect to what guides and what governs, you know, what we do here in the event of crisis, you know, whether it's evacuation, or whether it's lockdown, or some other scenario, so. The comment that was brought up, an inquiry about a school resource officer, just, you know, if you have any questions on a school resource officer, what their duties are, it's not something that I think you'll find in a lot of schools this size, if it's not provided by another entity. So, you know, a county level typically is what I'm familiar with, that's my experience in having worked in another school district in Minnehaha County that provided that, but even schools this size, we didn't have one. We didn't keep them five days a week, busy all day, every day, I mean, we only got them like half a day, you know, so ultimately, it still comes down to a funding issue, it's a funding resource. Not opposed the idea, but where do you, tell them, where do you get the money? You know, and people say, well, there's no price you can put on a child's head, I'm not going to argue with that. I mean, oh, I can't be subjected to that either, but, you know, if that's something that people become passionate about, and, you know, the masses show up with torches and pitchforks and say they want a school resource officer, then we would have to take a hard look, okay, which program's going to go? Because it will take a program to initiate a program like that, because the funding just isn't there. Grants, things like that, we can certainly take a hard look at, and I got some information on some of that school resource officer concept and grant money, so, and the state typically can help with some of that stuff. So that's kind of where that at, I wanted to bring that to your gaze of attention, if somebody has reached out to you, the school board members, to inquire about that, that concept, but coming this fall, we'll have a better grasp of that, and we'll make sure that the kids are aware of the plan, the teachers spend some time on the plan, and we'll practice, I mean, we'll get out of here. My experience was, is you walk them to where the site is, as to where you want a rallying point, because you have to have a rallying point. People say, well, that's kind of an oxymoron, because everybody knows where the rallying point's at, so what are you really trying to avoid? Well, I don't care, if they want in here, they're going to get in here, and if they want to do something dramatic or harmful, they're going to find their way. But it doesn't mean that we can't have some plans in place to do that, but you practice it with it, you walk them there, you show them, and then you come back and you say, okay, now go. Even the little guys, got to get there on your own, can't walk down the street holding hands in single file. You got to get there, and you just prep that, you teach that, you give them those exposures, and give them the confidence that they can go do that, so. That's been my best experience, not having been here before, and when this has been practiced, I've talked to a few, and it sounds like it was a very similar situation, so we'll explore that more in this, I myself, the summer, and then into the fall of the year, so.
So you had said that you had pulled the policy and reviewed what we have, and?
I'm looking at it, I haven't went through it with, and it's not even, you're not going to find anything in policy as much as it is procedure, so. And it's more about putting stuff on paper that is procedural as to how we're going to do things, so, that's not like it's concrete.
But are there like tactics that you take in the classroom or teach the teachers, or are there things that when you're going through that?
So what I would recommend there is, from a professional development perspective, I've had an experience, past experiences, where what we, what we came called to be known as ALICE. We were an ALICE school, that is an acronym. Can't tell you off the top of my head exactly what it stands for, but there is actual training that goes along with that for your staff as well as kids, and part of that is, it's, the premise is really built on evacuation. It's built on get out, and now it's really, it's, you won't, there is a lockdown component to it, but it's a little bit different scenario. So that's when you don't lock down, somebody's come in the building, you know, somebody's come in the building, and there's protocol, there's operative words, there's keys, there, that you listen, there's things of that, you practice all that stuff, and you hear that, and it's like, okay, by any means, we're going, man, we're going, we're getting, so, but yeah, there's training that we would take them through, I have to see what's embedded in that and the procedure, yeah.
ALICE train's really good, I mean, we did it at Mitchell Tech, I mean, it's all online, I mean, it takes hour and a half, two hours, and then obviously there's some questions that go with it, really, really good stuff there.
If we did something similar to that too, then we'd practice an active shooter drill, I think.
Yeah. And it's, it's not just schools, it's been in healthcare too, so they might have come down. I just happen to know a guy up in the HP, actually lived in the community, and him and I started it in that district's perspective and practice some of that stuff, so.
I think that would be really good.
Very familiar, yeah, very familiar with that, and I have all the documents that were created there. If need be, could be easily implemented at this, at this institution as well, so. Other than that, that's just summer maintenance, we're going the best we can, we're crazy, we're painting. The lockers I just got worked today will come on Wednesday, and it's a one-stop shop. These guys are showing up in a couple semis, and 250 lockers, and in and out, they'll unload them, they'll install them, and clean up, and away they go. So it sounds like maybe a two, three days process at max, so we'll have all the brand-new lockers in, hopefully by the end of the week, so, unless something changes. And I just put that last flyer in there, just for your conference, just to put a bug in your ear, you know, if you want to attend that, Associate School Board, School Administrators Ball Conference in August, first week of August, so. Might have to skip the rally, I don't know.
Or you can wear your rally stuff to it.
You could, absolutely. I've seen them before, actually.
Okay, I can pick that one up.
Are we, are we still fully staffed?
Yes. Good question.
It's a great question.
It is a good question. And I don't anticipate, honestly don't, I think we're pretty tight unless something dramatic happened, so.
All right, we will move to the next item, which is discussion items, number nine, first thing on the list is A, Armory Roof Replacement.
Questions on that, essentially what I'm proposing there, based on the company, and we used ARS, which Tecta, when they came and fixed the leak that we had in the armory, and that's at the time we discovered that maybe that lifespan of that has been beyond. It's, it's time, I did reach out to Shane, and I said, Shane, do you remember in your lifetime? He said, eh, he said, it was old when I got here, and he said, ah, we didn't do anything with it, he said, so. The school district has gotten their money's worth out of that particular roof, so it's not surprising to him that it was something that needed to be addressed, so. The bid laws, Craig can help me with this, if you all recall, maybe some of you don't, but any dollar amount, Craig, over the amount of 50,000, we have to legally, through codified law, go through a bid process in order to solicit vendors to do work such as that. I stuck ARS's proposal in there, what they were tabulating, and it was like, not a shocking number to me, but definitely a number that we have to abide by the bid laws for, so. I put the mockup of an advertisement for bids, I put a mockup of the specs that one would ask for within that bid, and then if you are so inclined to want to fix that roof, Craig can speak a little bit more to the funding at this stage of the game if we move forward with it, I think it's coming out of.
It's just being next year's budget, yeah.
Yeah. That concept, and probably maybe.
And if you look at our balance sheet, I mean, you got that out there right now, yes.
And is this document, guys, that you were looking for? So the, that's kind of where we're at, you know, directive, I guess, at this stage of the game is it, the question for you guys is it something that you want to fix, you feel that we need to fix, or replace, sorry. It's been fixed, do we need to replace it? And this is the armory and the armory only. I have yet to hear from him on the part that sits above the kitchen area that has. I have yet to hear from him on the part that sits above the kitchen area that has come loose, and we approved that quote here, I think, last month, that was for like $11,000, re-adhere that memory. So, I haven't heard from him when that's coming. He told me it's gonna be a while though, based on what's happened here weather-wise, so. Questions on that roof situation for you?
It's pretty important not to fix that.
I mean, Shane thought for sure it's 25-plus.
Yeah, that's...
I'm shocked that you got 25 years.
I don't remember, like I said, I remember being done when I was in high school, so that was 23, 24, yeah.
Don't say it too loud.
But whether that was last time or not, I don't know about that, as soon as I was.
Okay.
So, if you want me to go through that process, I can just go ahead and do that. We don't need necessarily any form of emotional information there. I can put that advertisement, just like we have for the last couple RFPs we put, we'll put it in the paper, and I'm shocked at how, they must have dedicated people in those firms that read local newspapers. That must be their job, because even if the last RFP, I had three or four people reach out to me on the construction management risk component. Nobody sent anything, but a few people inquire. I mean, I didn't think you'd even see that, but they did. So, I think you'd get fair representation there in order to do that replacement, so.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so we can move on to B. B is District Auction Sale. The board will discuss, consider, and set a date on the concept of hosting an auction sale for disposing of surplus property, furniture, classroom, and miscellaneous items that are no longer used.
I sent you an email, but then I put this in front of you tonight. There's three pages here, and Craig, and Julie, and I, and Tony, I don't know, last week sometime, we spent, I don't know, six-plus hours, we walked this whole footprint, identifying stuff that is stuff. Nobody was using, it was in this corner, it was in that corner, it was in the classroom, it was not attended to, I mean, so we could certainly use the space. It hasn't ever been done, I suspect, that's at least what I'm told. So, the question before you that I would ask is a little bit of guidance on, and I'm not, I don't have an allegiance to who I reached out to, it's just a guy that I knew was in the business. If we have local people, so be it, I don't care. But I did ask the one vendor that I did reach out to, and I said, "In order to get something out on a sell bill, really promote this, hit this hard, see if we can't get some people here on a weeknight." And I use the stipulation here, listen, this is not moneymaker for us, we want to dispose of this, you know, so we're not gonna sit here and nickel-and-dime everything, you know, and beat a dead horse. So, if it doesn't sell, get, let's go, move on, let's get the next item up here, so. And what remains, we'll get rid of. We'll dispose of either through the sanitation landfill, or we'll take it to H&R salvage and pull that route with it, so.
And you're confident under this stuff, any of the teachers are using or could use or...
Yeah, oh, I, I'd say, Craig, I don't know, most of it now. And we would put this out to the teachers, we talked about that when we were walking some, to let them know that, hey, this stuff's going bye-bye. If you wanna speak for something, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Or if you have something that's worse than that in your room that you're using, swap it.
Yeah, and we'll let them know that, for sure. But yeah, there's, as you can see, there's a lot of stuff. And there's some bigger ticket items there, well, you know, the white cargo trailer, no longer use that, it's under your possession. One of the vans, we can surplus that, thought maybe be a better route rather than, I think, closed bids, but if you wanna do closed bids, you can do that, sealed bids, sorry, not a big deal. And then we have another trailer out in the blue shed out by the football field, and then we have another, that apparatus, Craig, that apparatus is a homemade air compressor? Yeah. That thing is, it looks a little bit of a relic to me, but I think supposedly it does work. I couldn't guarantee that.
Well, it wasn't working when they went to use it this year, so they had it in the shop to get it to work out.
I don't know the guarantee that it does work, but, yeah. You'd be surprised what an item like that to the right guy would bring, DC's something like that, because it looks like something honestly that maybe you pulled out of the junk pile. Sorry. So, there's gonna be a few of those bigger ticket items, you know, so.
So, we need to set a date for that?
It would garner some interest. Well, I had some conversations about, I think Matt reached out to me, is there somebody local we should be using? This was a Mitchell auctioneer, does several, he was just down here a couple weeks ago, and that's why I had him come to the school and look, because he was doing one here in town. I have no allegiance. I talked to him, and he says, "Whatever," he said. Use me, don't use me, I don't care, he said. But if you wanna publicize this, or we wanna get some people there, I need, preferably, he said, "I'll do it, however," he said, but preferably, he likes to put them in papers in no less than two editions, sometimes three. I would like to get rid of it. I know the custodial staff is chomping at the bit to start moving it, and we marked it all, I went through it, we got stickers on everything that's supposed to go out the door, so. Conversations, comments about, if you want me to reach out to somebody local, I can. You'll have to give me some direction, because...
I don't know anybody, but you, somebody else might, do you guys know anyone?
Well, Stever and Beaver, maybe a little bit local.
Yeah, I was thinking of more Stevers.
Besides them, I don't know anybody else, but yeah, I think go ahead, in my mind, go ahead and do it, and line up who can do it, or whatever, you know, timeframe, I mean, if you booked out a little bit too, so.
I could certainly reach out to those guys too, see if they... And I, Matt brought a good point, I mean, I put in your packet the price point for that vendor I talked to, how much they charged, their commission, you know, I mean, we'll see what they charge for them. What's the going rate, I think, so. They don't do it for free, but I don't expect them to either, so.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the concept behind an auction sale.
Okay, we shouldn't need a motion for any of that?
I don't think so, just a...
All right, next discussion item is C, Celebration of Freedom Committee Request. The board will consider a request from the committee to utilize the district's resources listed in the request in support of the celebration and recognition of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial while being held over the July 4th holiday.
To put their request letter in there, I don't foresee any issues other than if we do tables and chairs distinction, and I said you need to talk to the National Guard too because a portion of their tables are marked, they're theirs, not mine, I don't have the authority to say you can use them or not, but making sure that all our resources were marked appropriately as well. So, and I trust the committee, I mean, if they come and get it, they use it, and we help deliver it, whatever, I honestly don't see a whole lot of issues with allowing that to happen, so, just my personal opinion, so. But they, I wanted to bring it to your gaze's attention, that there's resources that are leaving the school, so.
Anybody have reservations?
No.
All right, do you need a motion?
Not necessarily a motion, I think.
Yep.
Thanks, so.
Okay, all right, next on the list is D, Building Edition Public Meeting. The board will discuss and set a date to host an informational meeting with regards to the building addition being explored by the school board.
We're kind of circling back to that notion. We addressed it in May, and I know, I think, a statement was made, maybe we have that public meeting before or after we sign contracts with one architect who submitted the RFP, and you've made it in a board motion to go with them, to help bring it to development and design, and then the construction management at risk, which we just advertised for, which is an action item a little bit later, whether to accept that request for proposal as well. The concept of informing the public, we talked about that here last meeting, as to how many people actually know about the notion of a building addition, so. Feedback, I guess, I started a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation and just throwing some things out there that I could stand in front of the public, you know, on, and give them some insight, bring them up to speed, talk about the notion of the concept and how it's gonna happen, financing of it, things of that nature, so, just a matter of, I think, responsible wise, something we probably should do, can do, don't see why not, and then the question is, do you want that to dictate contractually where you go, or just bringing them up to speed? I, that's, and that's kind of, I think, we're, eh, probably a little angst maybe there, so, but I'll defer to you.
What would you prefer to do? What do you think? Probably have the meet, I don't, I don't know. It allows them to learn about it, I guess, but...
I'm wondering, guys, and I don't, I get it that we need to inform the public, I just don't know if we get asked questions, how many answers we're gonna have. I mean, we're gonna have a wrestling portion there, are we gonna have a place for basketball, are we gonna have a place for tennis, baseball, softball, I mean, I don't know. So, I get the concept, but I was thinking, I'm wondering if we don't meet with our architect first and get an idea of if we want this, this, and this, and this, what that cost is, and then we can go to the public and say, "This is what we're thinking, and this is the cost." At least we'll have something a little more concrete, otherwise, I don't wanna put you on the spot, Mr. McKinnon out there, when we don't have many answers. But, but that's only my thoughts.
And we had talked a little bit about, last time, about, you know, if whatever happens and we don't go through with whatever, and/or if it's a couple years down the road, you know, just, I think, you know, having an understanding or agreement, I don't know that if it needs to be formal, if it's in the contract, it's just to, you know, these are preliminary steps that we're gonna go through, and I think they should both be, you know, open to that, to figure out, you know, we, like John said, we gotta figure out how much it's gonna cost before we go.
Yeah, for sure.
So, I don't...
Does the administration, I mean, do Craig and you, Mr. McKinnon, with the high school principal, elementary principal, would you guys kind of get together and think of what you might think would work in a facility like that? I mean, I, as a board member, I can give suggestions, but...
We have.
Yeah.
So, we've already meted that quite in depth, honestly.
Yeah, and so maybe that needs to be brought to our architect, and then we need to put something that makes sense, so I just want something to present to the public and say, "This is what we're thinking," and we have something kind of really set, not in stone, but then we can have something to present.
Sure.
But, but I don't know exactly all that we want in this.
Right.
I think you guys and our athletic director would, you know, maybe there's some other people that you could think of, but you guys would know, wouldn't you?
Well, I, my concept on that is the notion of this conversation that we've had, this is not the first one that we've had. I don't know how many people engage, obviously, there's not a crowd here to, and if they go back and watch Tony's capturing of your board meetings, but I, I'm not adverse to standing in front of a group of people and giving some, a 10,000-foot view regardless of lack of direction, lack of what it could look like, 'cause I, and you're right, I agree 100%, that's what the questions are going to be. "Well, can you show me some, what does it look like?" The conversation that I would, if we felt it's necessary to say, "Hey, just so you were aware, the school board is having these conversations, reasons and rationale as to why we're even talking about it," and then give them some insight as to possibilities of a physical footprint type of deal, which we kind of got an understanding of what that is, but all the other components that are involved in it, we've sat down as a staff, as an admin staff, and we've talked about what are the necessities and the rationale behind some of the things that we would like to see within the facility. It's actually in your RFP, like you talked about, John, standalone wrestling room, standalone weight room, how do we bring all the other components from an activities perspective into that footprint? And then not just that component of it, but what can we do with some academic components behind that? We've talked about an after-school setting. As I've been working on that PowerPoint, I've come across a lot of things in my head as to, okay, what else could that facility be used for? And I thought of several, especially in our student-led ambassador groups from FFA, SACL, HOSA, FBLA, several ideas floated in my head, whether it's local competition, regional competition, fundraising type of events going on in a facility such as that amongst all your activities, you know, that, let me put athletics, go ahead, I mean, but all of that included, so. My, if you guys are comfortable with moving forward with later on, a contract with Arc Inc. and potentially entering an agreement with the one vendor that submitted an RFP for construction management at risk, and then we can certainly have some deeper conversations with those people and then bring it back to our public? I don't want you guys out in the public to get caught in the crosshairs and get accosted by a patron of the public and say, "We didn't even know you were even talking about it," or "You're thinking about building it," and is that, are we in error? Are we not doing due diligence then by having something more formal in the event that, "Hey, public, we as a school board, we're kicking around this notion." So, I, I don't like putting you guys in the crosshairs. No, it's, there's no accolades to what you do, and the last thing you need to do is walk down the street or get a phone call and say, "You know what." I mean, we've been on the end of those too many times.
Could you do that in simple communication in some way?
That's what I was...
Do we need to have a meeting?
Right, we have that very good.
Like an email or on the Trojan, send it or Facebook?
Very well, easily could be done.
I think that's a really great way.
I do, too.
Yeah, that way they can, like, see it in a different avenue and...
Yeah, for a couple years, John, I think they tried to have kind of a state-of-the-school assembly, and I don't think it was very, very well-attended. I know that would be a different subject, but I think it's been, I think, just doing it digitally somehow, or it can just be watched at home, I think that would...
Sure.
At this point, I think that would be...
Suffice.
Yeah, down the road, maybe it's more in-depth.
More information to come, you know?
Okay.
Just an awareness thing, not really anything other than that.
That way people are informed.
So, Tony, a question for you. If you put my ugly mug in front of the camera stipulating something that, or having some explanation, you capture it and then we push it out, that's feasible, just like we're doing tonight, right?
And you can do it in multiple, you know, have the link on the, put out on Facebook, you put the link up, school, YouTube, school channel.
Sure.
I guess whatever you're comfortable with, unless you would rather do a meeting.
No, no, I, I'm perfectly fine. This way is actually easier because we can take 15 takes of it.
We want to get better attendance and better information.
Better distribution.
Yeah, for sure. Well, and I think that's the key component, right? You brought it up, if we had some of those state-of-the-district addresses, then it's just no different than any other district, I'll be honest with you, they just don't show up.
Only 25 people.
You got pretty good, you got 25, so.
Well, and I think with our, the way that technology is, I think we reach a lot more people in that way, people are using that. I mean, I get tons of comments about how nice that is, so I know we're reaching a lot more people in that manner anyway, so.
I love that idea. I love the idea.
All right, anything else, any other discussion? Okay, we will move to E, Handbook Changes. The board will consider proposed changes to the elementary and middle school, high school handbooks for the 22, 23 school year.
I will defer to our elementary and high school principal on that, and I have to apologize that we did not get those proposed changes to you ahead of the time over the weekend for per-year review, but I think there's more, it's more grammatical. for per-year review, but I think there's more, it's more grammatic than it is anything with some structural changes, but Mr. Fisher's got some things he wanted to share with you for the elementary handbook, and then, Mr. Knipflin, I believe you have some secondary stuff, too, so. And I know you're seeing it for the first time, but if Mr. Fisher walks us through it, I don't think it'll be too time-consuming, so.
No, it shouldn't be. Not too many, like, big changes. Um, so, just a couple, uh, things here, so on 14, page 14 of our handbook, um, in the past, it's been really designated when people could wear shorts and open-toed shoes and all that. I wanna change that to just be parent discretion. Um, last year, we had a really warm fall and a really, and a really cold spring, and so it just, I don't think that we need to draw a hard line on that, parents, give them the power on that. So, that's what I changed on that, just to say shorts, open-toed shoes, and flip-flops are allowed based on discretion of parents, instead of all the other stuff of trying to really control exactly when and what and all that stuff. So, um, took out some of that, that would be one of the proposed changes there. Um, page 15, um, this was just, as I was reading through it, something that I, I don't know, just wanted to open it up and not pigeonhole us into something, but it was, with use of the library, it said that we'll have our library class, which we have, each grade has a library class once a week for 30 minutes, um, but then it says on other days, no more than two students from one class are permitted in the library. Just wanna open that up to allow for however many students need to be in there, um, just taking that out, um, and leave that open to the discretion of the le- the teacher that's in the library supervising at that point and the classroom teacher. And again, just take out some of the, the verbiage there. Then, when we get into page 16, it talked about different rules on the playground, I just wanted to take out playing ball in the schoolhouse, um, I didn't think that that needed to be in there, just kind of a weird.
I'm not sure what that even means, Mr. Fisher.
I wasn't either, that's why I thought it needed to be removed. Um, and then, the other, a little bit bigger one was, uh, with bus discipline. That was something that I had a little more experience with this year, and so felt a little better about offering up some insight on it now that I've been through a year. In last year's policy, it stated that if you, so you get one warning, and then after that, you're removed from the bus for a week, and then if there's one more, so a third violation, you'd be removed from the bus completely. Um, and so I wanted to just open that up a little bit more, and, and, I don't know, to me, it's being a little more equitable of, let's give our kids a chance to learn from some of the mistakes, um, before we draw that hard line. And so, on the first offense, two days, um, the second offense, a week, if there comes another violation after that, well, I guess first offense would be talking to, second offense, two days, third offense, a week. If there's a fourth one, then I feel like we've done our due diligence now, where I've had numerous conversations with parents, the bus barn, involve students, whatever, um, and now I feel better about saying, okay, it's just not working, you're not living up to the rules and expectations of the bus, so at that point, we're a removal. Um, so those are the things that I saw in the handbook that I would like to revamp and tweak, um.
Have you, have you talked to BJ Bussing yet?
I have not talked to them, I wanted to talk with you guys first, and then, then I would talk with them. We, I mean, we've communicated a lot about the policy over the course of the year, had, I don't know, three or four sit-downs on it, um, and I think they're, they just want action to happen, I think they would be open to this, um, they just want that when something happens on the bus, that there are consequences. Um, and so I think this supports that, but it helps me feel a little bit better about supporting our families, um, and not putting them in that spot of, hey, for the whole week, you gotta figure out how to get your kid here. Um, so that was kinda where I wanted to find that middle ground there with some of that.
Okay. Any questions, reservations?
Just out of curiosity, do we have any issues this year?
On the bus? Yep, we did. Um, we didn't get to the, we did some tweaking of what our current handbook said, so we didn't have to remove.
Forever.
Forever, but if we would've followed it, like, with a hard line, then we would've had to have removed a couple of students from that. So, we were able to kind of find a compromising middle ground. So, that's why I would like to have it worded a little differently, that then I can have that conversation with parents and fill them in upfront a little bit, ask things are happening.
So, does this mean it's revoked for the year, or it's revoked forever while there's?
For the year.
Okay. Okay. So, do you wanna talk to BJ Bussing before we do motion to approve, to, or do we wanna just do?
So, this process, now, you're gonna change something. Craig, you can chime in here because you're more familiar with this. This takes three times, correct? Two formal readings, so to speak, and then the third time's an adoption? Is that, am I correct on that?
Uh, not on the handbook, though, usually wasn't, 'cause usually you didn't.
And both part of policy and procedure.
Yeah, but they're usually, this, this is awful early, guys, good job of getting them to you, I think, compared to the past, isn't it?
We did at the July meeting last year.
As the first one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I just wanted to stay consistent with what there's.
Well, you have to talk to someone anyway, so it's fine.
I just wanted to come to you guys first.
You hear, June, it'll come back essentially in July, and then, in preparation for the start of school in fall, or in August, sorry, and even if you got, make a final approval in August, somebody puts a motion to it, we'll have everything ready to go. By then, we went through all the tweaks and all the necessary changes, if we don't like something, we hear pushback, feedback, whatever, we can still do.
The only bad part about waiting till the August meeting to do that is sometimes the open houses are before the school board meeting, if I remember right.
If, uh.
Get your calendar out.
When is the August one?
Especially registration for the high school kids and stuff, I just know, I remember it is as early as it could possibly be this year, that's the bonus, but last year.
My, my point to them.
Last year was as late as it could possibly be.
My defense to that, Mr. Bussing, would be, if there's gonna be changes to be made, that's done in June and July, so you can have a conversation about it in August with your kids, with your parents, say, this is what it's gonna be. The board hasn't necessarily put their 100% seal of approval on it, but we've already vetted it up to that point in time.
That's pretty early, August 8th, it's early, isn't it?
It's as early as it could possibly be. Is there a sign deal, if students or parents have to sign on those, in return?
No, but we are working on, uh, something with our new registration procedure, potentially, uh, that it would just acknowledge that I have read the handbook.
You can split those beans if you want, Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, we're, we're working on an, an online registration through, using a Google form, um, to kinda, right now, we're still using the paper copies, as I'm sure you guys are aware.
But we have, we have changed things after two meetings, though, and just finalized before in the past, or I mean, in the past, where you didn't actually have the third meeting because there was really nothing more to discuss. I'm just saying that is a possibility.
I just go by, when we had the last policy change, you were pretty adamant, but it was three readings, man.
It was?
Yep.
If we had to, couldn't we just approve it before the thing? I mean, we could, if we absolutely had to, have an extra.
To be honest with you, I don't think we've ever had readings of the handbooks in the past.
Why is the handbook different? I'm just asking.
I know, I'm just saying.
Okay. I don't, it doesn't, I just wanna, yeah, I agree, I wanna be consistent.
It's a good practice, the only reason why is because when something goes by, they bypass us, and they, they'll come to you, and they'll, you'll get a phone call, or you'll get a nasty email.
I mean, Craig, Craig's right on what he's saying on the policy compared to a handbook. I think, in my opinion, is why don't we go to the bussing company, and just talk to them, make sure they're okay, and we can come back for the next meeting, and.
Sure.
And they're ready for July.
Yep. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Easeability.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, we will move to action items. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Hit me to forget you already.
Yeah, it's all right.
Okay. Trying to make this correct. Um, I kinda started the process, the one thing I didn't add in here is basically any time it said seven through 12, we changed it six through 12, I didn't think we had to put those in there. Um, just kinda, three main ones I've gotten to so far, and there may be some that come later on down the road, but it's gonna be a work in process for a year or two, probably. Um, the first part is some things out of the, there's a section of the middle school, high school handbook that says code prohibiting serious misconduct, and I added a couple rules, it used to end at 11, and I added 12 and 13. These are some things that I think in our day and age are good to have in there, in case the situation ever arises, especially rule 12, I know up in Mitchell, there's been three or four different incidences where people in either a locker room or a bathroom using a phone have captured inappropriate things happening, and that kinda, I just think we need to state it in our handbook, so that way if that situation, wherever it arise, we have that dealt with. And same kinda thing with, I mean, we have a whole bullying policy right after this, uh, but to define harassment, sexual harassment, uh, there had never been anything about cyberbullying in the handbook that I could see, so I thought that was a big one, and so to just kinda define and lay it out and let it know that it is tolerated, I think that kinda covers some bases that were maybe left out, and they probably were dealt with anyway, but at least this way it's stated. Any questions about those? Anything that would be highlighted would be new, that's not in there yet, I'm adding it all. On the second page, um, you know, this is gonna kinda come as, I guess, maybe, uh, a little bit of a, maybe the biggest change in terms of how I run stuff, uh, would be in terms of the discipline policy. I, I do not intend on using Saturday school, um, and so I, we can cut it all out, or I can leave it in there as a possibility, um, but my intention is to, um, use before and after-school detention, and then in-school suspension if I can figure out a place to house them, which right now, we don't really have. But, um, the idea of being there is, I believe that the more immediate the discipline is, the more effective it would be, um, sometimes when you give them a Saturday school for two Saturdays from now, and you kick the can down the road, that doesn't really hurt that kid in the moment. And so the idea would be, is if you can see the highlighted stuff up in the number one paragraph, is basically defining that if a kid receives a detention, they would have either that night after school, the next morning, or the next day after school, um, to serve it, um, those would be their three opportunities, so that way they kinda have, so to speak, still a day notification like they used to have. Um, they would be 45 minutes in length, either from 3:15 to 4:00, or from 7:25 to 8:10, um, and it's, put in there, like, cell phones would be confiscated, we're trying to make it as painful as possible so that they didn't want to be in detention, hopefully. Um, like I said, we could leave the Saturday school thing in there, just in case halfway through the year I change my mind, but right now, I'm thinking that, especially with me driving from Parkson, I'm not gonna wanna drive down on Saturday mornings as well. Um, and I just, like I said, philosophically, I believe that the more immediate, the more it'll work, so that's what that's dealing with. Um, on the last page there, you know, a couple things. First off, I kinda stole this from Mr. McKinnon's old Mount Vernon one, the cellphone use policy. I'd, I'd had it changed, and then when I read his, I liked his better, so I kinda copy-pasted that down. The idea being is, um, there will be an expectation that during classroom time, cell phones will not be used for any reason, um, and this is just kinda defining exactly what we mean by that and what will happen if you continue to break that policy, with the idea being that, you know, if it's during class and you pull your cellphone out to check a Snapchat, the teacher's gonna take it, they're gonna give it to me, and you don't get it back till the end of the day, you lose it for the day. And if that happens multiple times, now we're gonna call your parents, and they gotta come get it, so they understand that this is a recurring problem, and so that's, that's dealing with it. And then, at the bottom there, um, you know, it's already stated that there's no wearing of hats, and I don't want any hoods worn, too, like, you can wear a hooded sweatshirt, but you're not gonna put the hood over the head. To me, that's a, it's a body language thing, it's a distraction thing, it's a way of, of trying to, um, not participate a little bit, and it, and just for the professional appearance, showing your attentive, I don't want that done either, so I just added that as well. Is there any questions or anything you'd like me to adjust?
Justin FYI, I'm the first cyberbully who has Saturday school in that one, too, so there.
Okay, and I probably, I'd added that, and then later on, I kinda went through that, so I will have to, uh, yeah, you know, you know, put that in there to make sure that they know that, I'll cross that out and put detentions to. Thank you.
Well, let's be going out ahead of time, 'cause I fear for the first couple days of school.
You know, I think that'll be something that I'm gonna lay out, like, I, I plan on having, um, some meetings with each class, you know, middle school, high school, whatever be, um, during the first couple SRBs where I define the expectations, whether it be the assembly slash PowerPoint, whatever, but they'll know early on, and, and we'll talk about it as a staff in the first, future couple days, too, so the staff, you know, they'll be the first ones to know, and they can kinda push it out through each one of their first-day syllabi, like, this is the expectation in every classroom, this is how it's gonna be. I also, if, if they're all gonna be on board, the two, like, unless you have a medical reason for it, I don't want them to take their cellphone to the bathroom, like, that should almost be like their way of checking out to go, 'cause to me, what I've found is a lot of the reasons anybody ever wants to go to the bathroom is so they can check their phone, not 'cause they actually have to go to the bathroom. So, it might help minimize and reduce the issues, one with the photographic equipment and the, those things, getting filmed and recorded, and to just kinda get rid of that practice.
We, so in support of that, I mean, I've, I've lived Mr. Knipflin's experience, obviously, so, of the same, I think, uh, obstacles that we're experiencing as a staff here, especially at that end, are, if, things that have passed lift, so to speak, so I think, uh, the, the notion certainly headed the right direction. One element there that we could certainly, uh, put another layer to it is, is that we took the initiative on every restroom facility, every locker room facility, it was, uh, a very large 11 by 17, it was laminated, it was very large in print, and it put right in there the expectations as far as any, we hung them on the door. They stayed on the doors, too, and they stayed outside of the restrooms, I mean, 'cause they made sure that the students knew, this, one of these disappears, somebody, there's gonna be a price to pay, so just leave it alone. Bottom line, it was no cameras, no phones, locker rooms, they will not be out, they will not be in the bathroom, they will not, for obvious reasons. I mean, and those are the reasons that, you know, again, something precipitated that, right? Even the district I was, there was a rationale behind it, you know, why we got to that point, because it did happen, like Mr. Knipflin said, been a few incidences in that district where, yeah, I mean, and it wasn't, can, is that gonna be an end-all, the be-all? No, probably not. Can they still do that? Sure, if that's the choice, but at least we're taking the initiative and putting it out to our kids, letting the, the parents know, the teachers know that this is truly unacceptable, and kids leaving, especially in our SRB periods, I gotta go to the bathroom. This is the 15th time you've been to the bathroom, what do you, what's the problem? You know, so you know what they're doing.
Do kids have cell phones in their classrooms currently? I'm sorry, I'm a little wanna touch with.
Yes.
On the side of the spectrum.
Yes. At that end, I would say there's, it's a, it's a teacher decision at that stage of the game. Some are better at it, uh, Ms. Bartel probably knows better than I do, but it's, I'll, I'll just be point-blank honest, some teachers are better at keeping it at bay in their classrooms and not allowing it, and some teachers, not so much. I mean, so consistency across the board, these kids are playing the fiddle on both sides. So, I'll go into Mr. Leishner's class, and we're gonna have a heyday because he doesn't call me on the carpet, and then I'll go into Mrs. Bartel's, and, you know, it'll be, it comes in the box right here, and don't look at it until I tell you to look at it, which is fine, that's the way it should be. So, yeah, there is discrepancies there, so.
Thanks.
So, so, the, go underneath the Saturday detention, you have it all, um.
Yep.
Crossed out, but, um, so, so we aren't doing Saturday detentions, which I don't have an issue, um, but are, are kids gonna be aware that it's because of insubordination, poor behavior, bad behavior on the bus, skipping class, tobacco? I mean, is that all still in there?
So, all of those things, I, I had looked at that, too, even as I was sitting back here earlier, I was looking at, all of those things are discussed earlier in that, um, you know, you look at like rules one through 11.
Sure.
Those things are discussed, I do wanna make sure that they understand, I gotta go back there and look and make sure that anything that used to say Saturday school would now say detention, which would, or, or I, in-school suspension, gotta do. So, I will have to go back and do a little bit of cleaning up there, I think, still, um, just where, there's probably been some times, it's 61 pages long, where I just did not see the Saturday school, but I'm gonna have to keep cleaning that up. But, yeah, um, 'cause I looked at that exact same thing, too, about the definition of when those things are, and, and define which ones of these would be, um, in-school suspensions, and which of those would be just detention, I guess.
A, a common practice there, again, having been in Mr. Knipflin's shoes at one point in time, is you extend your ori- student orientation meetings with your students. So, seniors, I want you for an hour and a half.
Oh, I've never done an hour!
Okay, that's fine, but you're gonna come in for an hour and a half. Every one of those situations and going through that handbook, step by step on that, and whatever he changes, you're made well aware, students, this is what it is now. Don't care what it was, this is what it is now. So they are informed about the changes that are going to be implemented. And they're going to be expected to hold the line on. So, yeah, I mean, definitely communicate it to them, John, about what that is.
And you're right, they're all going to go home and tell the worst possible version of the story.
Just an FYI, I've already heard this, so they already know about it. I just wanted, I was just curious.
While I was still sitting in my classroom in Mitchell, they were talking about how their friends in Parks and they were saying that I was coming down there to lead their lives. Take that for granted.
Well, they didn't say that, but they were like, "No cellphones. What is this about?" I'm like, "Oh, this is going to be a rough year."
It's okay, it'll be fine. And that's because they were coming straight out of the classroom side of it. You just see it and you understand the negative effect it has in a classroom. And whether they like it or not, you know, just because they don't like it doesn't mean it isn't needed. And this is going to be one of the things where they won't like it, but it is 100% needed to bring the value of the classroom back.
You don't have to convince us.
So it's a fight I'm willing to fight. I think it's like, it's got to be a fight that I'm willing, it's a hill I'm willing to die on, and I'll fight it to the end. I think most teachers will, too, hopefully. So that's, I won't do it if they won't support me because they're the ones that are going to be forcing it. Yeah, so, and I think they will, especially if we sell it the right way. And what we can do with kids, too, is like, it's not like we're taking away forever. It's just trying to get them to understand instruction times for that reason and that reason.
They'll be fine. They want structure. They want discipline. It's just their nature to grumble about it, but I'm telling you, having lived it, it.
Good. Yeah, yeah. We'll have to, you know, we'll have to get creative with some stuff. Like during the downtime in SRB, we'll find some ways to let them have something that's not their phones. You know, the idea would be is they're going to be social, whether it be, we all have a few board games or some cards. And we teach them how to play some social games that are not just, the hard part is when you just see them just sit down and completely ignore each other. It just is, it's not fun. And so we're going to try and change that the best we can.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move to action items. A is consider RFP for selection of construction management firm. The board will consider all submitted RFPs by vendors that have submitted their proposal for construction management for the proposed building addition project.
So I apologize again, my mistake. I have in your packet, well, this didn't make it in the email. You know, so you didn't get the packet till just now. If it looks familiar, you saw one of these from the Pitts Corporation when we were looking for the design process. And you interviewed them for the design process. So you will see a lot of similarities in their proposal. And it basically just outlines their company, their history, aligns who the people are in place, who would play a role in it in their company to bring construction management to the perceived, or the foreseeable project as we go through it. And then they do their comparatives, other places that they have built. They have some cost examples in there, not projections, anything according to this, our project, but things and how they do things in the past or have done things in the past. And Mr. Weber talked to it, actually to you in that special board meeting, about the construction management component of it and how they go about managing the mid-process. And that's the role that they play. Your architect firm is going to be the design component of this. And then the construction management is going to help facilitate the building of it. Letting out bids for certain particular areas. You know, if you turn to page 17, just to give you an example, it says, "A project approach to cost estimating." You'll see the phases, not phases, but categories. You'll see concrete, mason, metal, rough finish, doors, windows, thermal. I mean, all of those things are going to be not uncommon to have 30-plus different bid packets come in on every component of your facility if we decide to move forward with that. So they help write that spec, and then they help facilitate that particular component of deciding which low bidder, so to speak, and who's met the spec. So that's what construction management brings to the table. And again, I'm not articulating anything that you haven't heard, sitting with Mr. Weber here in the past conversation when they were here as a design firm. So, and they just happen to do both, right? They design and they do construction management. But this was the only company out of the couple that reached out to me. This is the only one that submitted a proposal to meet the RFP that we asked for and we advertised for. So it's just a matter of, you know, based on the prior conversation that we already had, you know, do you want to bring them under contract as well? So a lot of the look to it, a lot of the information is very similar, other than maybe that page 17 in which I showed you how to go about doing that. So. And that's more about the bid process. So yeah, if we want to take some time, browse through it a little bit and have some conversation. And again, I apologize for not having that in the packet. I think Jill was in yours, John, it was in yours.
Yes.
This was if you hadn't met, I dropped the wrong one.
Any thoughts?
Getting that to you in a timely fashion.
So you're looking for us to make a motion to approve this?
This is an action item, yeah. You're going to, the expectation is you will, a motion to approve. Hiring Pitts as your constructor manager at risk or table on it or no?
Yeah, thoughts?
Well, I think, I mean, last meeting, we thought it was a good idea to go that route. So, I mean, I don't see any reason why not to now.
I would agree.
And like I said before, I mean, I'm, we're in this catch-22 phase of the project, potential project here that if we just need to figure out costs and design first, and you got to start somewhere. So, I mean.
And that's a great point, know that bringing them on board, they were hand-in-hand with the architect in the design phase of it, even though they bring the price points to that, because that's their experience with that. So bringing them on board is going to help, I think, answer your questions, you know, about what you just stated, so.
John, you have any thoughts?
We've used them in the past. And so it isn't that this is our first rodeo. So I have competence in the company.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Sean Felder and seconded by Leishner to approve or no, not to consider.
Select.
Select is a good word. Pitts Construction as construction management at risk. So to select Pitts Construction for construction management services for a possible building project. Do I need to put possible or just for the building project? What do you want? You didn't have, Jed, you made the motion.
Um, possible.
Okay. So again, moved by Sean Felder, seconded by Leishner to select Pitts Construction for construction management services for a possible building project. Any other discussion? Hear none, no favors, aye? Pose same sign. Motion carried.
All right, we'll move to action item B is approve agreement with Architecture Incorporated. The board will review the contract agreement with Architecture Incorporated for their services for the proposed building addition design.
I put that in your packet. It was obviously very lengthy. This is a standard contract for this type of work. I reached out to our, Mr. Freeman and read through it. And he said, "I have no qualms with that. It's very standard." And he said, "I'll put my own plug in." He said, "I've worked with this company too many times to count." And he said, "I have nothing but good to say about them. You will have no issues with them." So he said, "Take it for whatever it's worth." That's coming from a lawyer.
All right. Um, I know. All right, any discussion? In case you have any thoughts? You just need a motion to approve then. We've already kind of.
So approve the agreement with Architecture Incorporated for services.
Been through this and.
For the possible building project, right?
We chose them, so I feel like, yeah. I'll second it.
Weber, seconded by Niebel. Any other discussion? Hear none, no favors, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
So now they'll be connected, right? Because wasn't he wanting to know right away who we chose for construction management?
Yeah. So I'll reach out to both Arc Inc. and Pitts Construction.
They'll work together.
Yep. And I haven't heard from him for two weeks, Steve Jastrum. But remember, he had told us in the interview that, you know, he thought maybe if he were lucky, second week of June, maybe more of the end of June before they started circling in on it. But I've had more than one email conversation with him, and we're on their radar, you know. So, and he knows, we went with the construction management at risk RFP and, you know, kind of alluded to, he's worked with the same company again in several capacities. So, I mean, they know they're going to be working together.
Okay, all right. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to C under action items, canvas and certify school board election results. The board will discuss and review the ballot count submitted and certified, the June 7 school board election results.
Okay, so yes, the number of reds, so all this stuff here has to be in our minutes for South Dakota qualified law. The number, the actual, the date of the election held was June 7, 2022. Number of registered voters of the school district on the date the voter registration closed was 1,998 voters. Number of registered voters in the school district who voted in the election was 558. The percentage of registered voters in the school district who voted in the election was 27.93%. We have to have that in there. And then the actual vote counts. And I have a sheet here for the rest of you to sign those. Now, I do have the ballot box right here. It's still zip-tied up, shut. We can get, I don't, I don't know that we opened that. Because we were here when they, when they counted them. They gave them to me. They were, they counted, we had multiple people doing tallies, the workers did, and we just monitored and we're here. Because they didn't do it down at Legion Hall, because if they would have done it at the Legion Hall, all those ladies that were doing the primary, which didn't have to count anything because all theirs was electronic, would have been mad at us because it took them about an hour to, at least an hour, wasn't it?
It took us, no.
We were here till about nine o'clock.
All of an hour.
So two hours.
558.
Yeah, reading them off and marking them off. So. But this was for the three-year term election. Jill Niebel received 354 votes and Cody Sprecher 192. For the two-year term, Tom Martinez received 112 votes and Scott Turinger received 443 votes. Jill Niebel will fill the vacant three-year term and Scott Turinger will fill the vacant two-year term. So I guess I need a motion for all those bulleted items that'll go into there. So, moved by Leishner.
Second.
Seconded by Sean Felder to canvass and certify those election results that were just read. And declare Jill Niebel and Scott Turinger winners of the Parks and School Board election held on June 7, 2022. A roll call vote, pro?
Approve. I mean, I don't know what to say.
Yes, roll vote, yes or no? It's, I got to do a roll call vote on this.
Yes.
Sean Felder?
Yes.
Leishner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
And Niebel, you need to have seen. Any other discussion? Hear none, no favors, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. I'm sorry, yes, I didn't have to do that, we just did that. Yep, my bad. All right.
It's been a while.
Motion carried. I know, since 2011, and it was a tie, so it's completely different than this.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No games of chance included in this one. So, didn't have to flip a card. That's what we did.
Was it to flip a coin or a card?
I did cards, because that way they both could draw. I flipped a coin. Yep.
That's right. I never.
If you flip a coin, only one person gets to guess. So I drew cards. They could do anything. That's what they told me.
Gain a chance, is that how it is?
Could have drew straws.
Yeah. Rock, paper, scissors.
Probably, yeah. That's what they told me at the state. Maybe we should incorporate something then at the highest level. But our percentage, I mean, voter turnout was really well. I mean, 28%. I know I talked to the Plaid later, I think they had 13% show up for theirs this year in April. So I think it helped with us having it in conjunction with the primary, which definitely was a positive. And then we held it at the Legion Hall with, where people were already going anyway, rather than having it out here, too. So it did cost us a little bit for the, sharing the rental of Legion Hall, but I think it was well worth it. Just a notion there, Craig and I have talked about the concept of when it comes that we're more aligned with maybe a city election rather than a primary concept. So again, shared costs in that. But earlier in, that's usually an April board meeting rather than a June board meeting. And if that person, from an acclamation perspective, then they can attend, you know, a few more meetings to see how the whole process works before they take office in July, so. And that's, I've already talked to the city finance officer up there. She wants to do it. It works better, because you know, if it's not a primary year, then you don't have anybody to go with. Just turn it on.
So you could use the late election.
Yeah, there's two different paths you can, you can follow. And it's just all on when you got to publicize everything then. Yeah, it'll be the, I don't know what, it's, I think theirs was April 12th or something like that. Typically, it was second Tuesday in April. Yeah. So, but so next time, we may follow that, talk about that during the organizational meeting. Because that's when you set the election date.
Yep.
Is that the organizational meeting next month, so.
Are there any rules against putting up like their bio, like what they prefer, what their, like the questions that we answered? I just feel like sometimes people don't know who they are. And so if you don't know who the person is, it's kind of nice to know who you're voting for and why. Sometimes people just pick a name because they're like, oh, you know.
And sometimes they don't vote at all because they don't.
Yeah. Well, and that's the only thing I thought of was like, well, you know, if you're showing up and you don't know the people, like you don't have kids in school anymore, you might not know who we are.
You can't have anything at the election.
You can't. I didn't know how that worked. Okay. Ken?
Not, you can't have any signs or anything within 100, so many feet of the door, actually.
Okay.
People can't be standing outside with, you know, holding up things.
Our website and our Facebook page.
They did have, yes.
That was our only avenue, you know.
And it was good.
Hopefully people to share at that point.
It worked good, yeah.
You know, the only thing I would say there is, you know, worst-case scenario, and I'll put Scott on, under the microscope, is if we published something like that ahead of the time in a paper setting, so.
Yeah.
That could be a problem.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal. It's just something I know.
You just can't do it at the polling place.
Well, even for me, like, when you show up and you vote for someone that, like, mayor or whatever you're voting for, sometimes it's kind of nice to know, like, what are their high points? Like, if you don't know them that well and you're going to vote, sometimes it's nice to know those things. But if you.
I mean, you're supposed to know someone, Bob?
Yeah, you are, yep. According to, yeah, it's good to know. All right, we'll move on. Letter D, approve supplemental budget for 21-22 school year. The board will discuss proposed transfers and supplements to the current school district budget.
Okay, so I gave you that sheet here. These are the five function codes. Yes, everybody got it? Sorry. So, you know, every year, we come up a little short in areas and a little long in other areas. None of the big ticket, I had no big-ticket ones like last year. Last year, I missed one by ways. But, you know, a couple of these things, there's rationales for everyone. I went through them with Mr. McInnes today, too. A lot of it still had to deal with extra title money. Extra money that weren't necessarily in the budgets when we published it in July last year. Okay? High school term, the 18,000. I just had, so when we did the Solik, math interventionist, I had it all budgeted under the elementary side and not half and half. Elementary high school was one of the main reasons that one was off. What's the next one? Title one, that was some extra. I just didn't have Joan Negabar in the right spot on that. And then we got some extra money. So we did some IXL learning subscriptions there. After that was, oh, the other, that 1299, that is something new. 1299, that is something new because that was our skills class that does run through the sped department in the high school. I could no longer keep that money in the trust and agency. And the kids go around and learn social skills and counting money skills with the candy drawer and the lava jar of a cart. And.
It's money in, money out.
Yep, it's money in, money out because people pay for the candy bars and then they, but the problem was they didn't much have that in trust and agency because there was no group associated with it.
Club.
It's not a club. And that needs to be club money only. So, that was a Gatsby ruling that we had to move it over there. So, and that wasn't at, in budget at all. So, that's why there needed to be something there. Counseling services, that was Esser money. We purchased seven mindset, seven mindset, um, deal there. Next one, nursing services. I just missed that one by a hundred and forty dollars. So, I have a, put 500 in case there's some supplies or something comes in. Mentoring program was the next one, which is under instructional staff training services. What this is, is a statewide program that is money in, getting and money out. But what happened was, is I didn't realize last year, we had two mentor teachers doing it. And the state didn't even have it in the budget when they gave it to me ahead of time. You know, had one. So, we didn't get the money from the other one until afterwards. And I didn't even get any of it till afterwards. So, basically, this is two years of the mentoring program even, but that I paid out this year. But I don't have one, one person down in the budget to start with. So, it was a little combination of the, that's a tight line because that state, what was the ending conference you go to? First week of June, right?
Summer.
Miss Pink was one of our mentor teachers.
Summer Academy. It's.
Yeah.
What you have to go through certification and the credits if you're taking it for credit knowledge. You have to be at that to seal the deal.
Yep. So, what's the next one? Audit services, that was because of the federal money in the initial audit. Very seldom, you gotta have, so if you get over, I think it's $500,000 and.
Or 750.
Is it 750? Yeah, federal money. Then you have to add additional service thing done in your audit, which costs a little bit more. And when they gave us the quote last year, it didn't include that. So, I was off by $800 there. Board of Education Services, this is you guys. But the reason why I was off was because of the, what, simbally?
Symbly, the, the subscription to.
Subscriptions to the.
Online associate school board policy.
Yeah. And I didn't have that in the budget originally. So, that's why that one was off. Principal Services, this one is my mistake last year. I did not expense Mr. Yost when he left. I was more worried about making sure his insurance and all that stuff because he was starting a new job on July 1. But he still got paid August, or July and August from us as well. And I didn't expense those into the correct year. So, that's why that's a little high. It actually should've been in last year's budget. I probably get a little right up in the audit that I didn't expense his salary out. And then, so that was part of the reason why that one was off there. Operational Maintenance Services, that's gonna be summer help and just missing it by a little bit. That's not too bad considering compared to last year, though. Recruitment and Replacement Services, that's the background checks. And with all of the new substitutes, I usually budget $750 and miss that by $71 of some sense. So. Male activities, state wrestling was one of the main culprits of this because of the team making the dual tournament. There was more, every kid went. So, you had every kid meal money. You had an extra day of hotel. You had more hotel rooms than what was budgeted for originally. After that, transportation, or no, female activities. That one was, of course, state volleyball. Going to Rapid with the Greyhound in the hotels that were not budgeted for at the beginning of the year. So, that's why that one was off a little bit there. And transportation services as well as part of that, along with fuel prices and, and stuff there. Because the transportation services, the 6,500 is just the busing where the 6,200 would've been, hotels and meal money and things like that. And HOSA was also a culprit of, of that one, of the reason why I didn't have enough budget for what HOSA did. So, that is all for the general fund. Now, some of that money, talked about, title grant. Some of the money's gonna be reimbursed through that. Some of it's gonna be the Esser free grant and some of the mentor program. And the rest of it would be our cash on hand, meaning, but then you go through all these yellow ones. Some of these were, I have $10,000 left over in the combined activities. As I was high there. So, I mean, overall, it's, it was pretty, pretty minimal there.
Keep in mind, you're not short that. It's just what was published in the budget.
Yes.
Versus what's been actually expended, either positive or negative. It has to match. So, it's not like this is an additional amount of money. Okay?
Yeah, I cannot have a, a function code. And that's why it's by the 1131. So, I said, those are function codes. I can't have one of those negative in the audit at the end. So, and when you look at the elementary line, you know, there's extra there, which could've been part of the extra leftover there, 50,000. So, it's off. That was why some of these were negative is because I was over there. I had them in the wrong spot.
Most bills are in, but we still got 17 days of June left.
Yep.
That's why it's just a little bit more than what he just said. We, you always, you kinda make sure that you don't get caught short because what he just said, it can't be negative.
Capital outlay, there was two things, technology and school. Hope you remember Mr. on my camera on the top of my head. I got, that's why I brought these sheets. Do you remember what I said?
Trying to think what we talked about.
Oh, F2G website was one of the main reasons.
Yep.
Um, there. I mean, I was, that's a little high. Probably, I mean, it was about 11,000. So, I went a little, actually, just in case there's a few other bills come in. And that was the one there, combined activities. Oh, was, part of it was the Sphinx risers because at one point we talked about taking those out of Esser money, but we did not because of the HVAC project. Instead, we just paid for them. So, I didn't have the budgeted over here. I had them budgeted in the elementary side, which that's why that one was high or had left over. And then the all-school huddle was the other reason. The cameras that are in the two gyms that we put up, rather than doing individual groups and everybody pay, you know, we pay for a basketball subscription. We pay for a wrestling subscription. We paid for a volleyball subscription. We just did an all-school huddle, which is what schools we're going to. And there's two, then we got two cameras out of the deal, hi-def cameras. There's Tony would've had to spend. We looked at what his replacing a camera would've been, which he would've had to do anyway. And it was just kind of a no-brainer to do that. And that was not in the original budget. That was the two reasons why those combined activities were off. Special Ed 35, that was all because of AIDS with kids just showing up and the needs. And we didn't have them in the original, original amount. So, I was off there. Then the Enterprise Fund, preschool, that was all supplies. I just must've put the supplies. When she ordered supplies, I budgeted them in the general fund and not her area where they need to come out of. Because I didn't have anything for her supplies, what a teacher purchases stuff. And she has preschool snacks and all that stuff throughout the year. And that's what it amounted to. It was about $1,200. So, I put 2,000 through the line, in case there's a few more.
All right. So, we need a motion.
We need a, yep, a motion for the resolution that states, basically, that resolution is this right here that I gave you.
The supplemental.
Yep.
Okay. So moved.
Moved by Nebel, seconded by Weber to approve that resolution. Let those amounts. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on this. Pro?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schumpfelder?
Yes.
Leishner?
Yes.
Nebel?
Yes.
Resolution carried.
All right. And that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to adjourn. It is 8:10. This is a record.
This is a record.
I just had one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. McInnes, when we talked about the, our people that's the Art Mac or the, the people are gonna do.
Arc Inc.
Arc Inc., I'm sorry.
Architecture Incorporated, yep.
So, so thinking ahead here a little bit, are you, if you're gonna put something on the website, which, that's good. So, I mean, at some point in time, we're gonna have to, whether it's one or two board members or the staff or whatever. So, are you, to get a kind of a jump start, you said they would be available sometime this month?
That was the last conversation I had with Steve.
So, would it make sense for, if the administrative staff here has some ideas of what they think this could possibly be, would it make sense for you guys to meet with them just to get it off the ground? So, before we get our committee forum that want to be meeting down the road that they could kinda have some ideas of what's.
And I actually think, I think that's Mr. Jastrum's approach. I think he will meet and very open-door, meaning I'll meet with whoever you want to meet with, you know, and have that initial conversation.
Sure.
So, they can start putting some foundation to it like you suggest, John. And then we put that committee approach concept together. And then we can start progressing that and moving that a bit further down.
Otherwise, we're just, we're, you know, I think we gotta get started somewhere. And if you guys have a good idea of what a starting place could be, then, then we can get the committee put together and then we.
Yep.
Take off from there.
Sure. I mean, I'm comfortable with that and having that conversation with them, as long as you guys are comfortable with us.
Yeah, I'm not trying to speak for anybody else here, but we gotta get somewhere started.
Yep, I agree. And as far as people on that, I want you guys to think about, because you in your reorganization, what you do every July.
Yep.
You have those committees approach. You have a building committee. I couldn't tell you right now who's on that building committee, but doesn't mean that those two are the ones that have to, you know, stay on that. If there's somebody that's passionate about it or whatever, just remember, there can only be two of you. Otherwise, it's a board meeting every time because you, you got three, three people involved. So, it's two of you involved in that process. So, whoever wants to be involved in that process, you know, whether it's the two that you placed on the committee or somebody different, which is fine, just think about who those people are. So.
Okay. Good. All right. Eight, what? 13-ish?
Need a motion to adjourn, Craig?
Yep.
So, moved by Schumpfelder and seconded by.
I'll second it.
Nebel, any other discussions? Hearing none, no favors, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.